Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Scioto Township Planning Commission meeting of August 12th, 24. And with that, we are missing our secretary this evening, so Brian has agreed to complete the forms, and Andrea will be our timer tonight. So with that, roll call, please.
Excellent. Gable, impressive. Moore?
Here.
Culbertson?
Here.
Matheny?
Here.
Walsh is absent, I is absent, Riser?
Here.
All right, we have quorum.
All right. Then we'll move to adoption of the agenda.
So.
Second.
And in discussion under the agenda, I do want to point out, I can either point it out now, or I can point it out when it comes up, but under Article 11, Conflict of Interest, if Planning Commission members should individually decide abstain from any discussion or votes relative to the matter that is subject of the conflict. So a member can do it, or a member of the public can ask the Planning Commission if Commissioner should abstain. I recently ran for, to retain my seat, and the attorney for one of the, one of the substantive matters on today's was one of the many attorneys who contributed to my campaign, rather than there, I don't think it presents a conflict of interest, but it could present a potential appearance of a conflict of interest. So I would not oppose, and if someone might even suggest that if a member of this body moves that I abstained from consideration or deliberation, I would, I would vote in support of that if you're suggesting.
Okay. All right. Then I, we have a motion on the table for adoption of the agenda, and then I would propose that we, as a commission, take up.
That'd be a separate vote.
Yes, right. So, so since we have a motion on the table, any further discussion on the agenda? So all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, the agenda is approved, it's posted. So with that, then, Commissioner Riser, do you, do you want to? Is there anything else that you'd like to add about?
No, I, you know, the, other than better say than sorry.
Okay. All right. Then the commissioners, basically, it then is, is up to the remaining members to talk about, and if you want to, the bylaws are posted on the website, but basically, the conflict of interest, there are very specific, there are three very specific items that would be a conflict of interest, and then under number four, and this is on page seven of the bylaws, there is a reasonable appearance of a conflict of interest is determined by the Planning Commission member declaring such a conflict, or by the remaining members of the Planning Commission. And so the procedure is basically discussion, and then a vote of the remaining members of the Planning Commission, and if, in this case, it would be three members would determine whether it was a reasonable appearance of a conflict of interest. So, I guess, number one, I'll, I'll ask for, is there a consensus that we would like to discuss this?
Yes.
That's true. Yeah. Okay. All right. Then we'll, we'll open that for discussion, and so, so basically, if I understand it right, the attorney representing the applicant contributed to your campaign.
That's right, that's right.
Your campaign.
And, and I haven't talked to him about my campaign, I haven't talked to him about this item. And, and I know, I saw this when I was reviewing the packet last week, Friday, and I thought, oh, this is a potential appearance of a conflict of interest, and you know, like I said, rather than say than sorry, the prudent thing to do would be for someone on this board to move their, I cannot abstain on my own. But so it's, this board has to abstain me, if that's a verb, but, but, you know, and I wouldn't oppose such a motion if one's proper. And would anticipate board to support, yes.
I'm curious, is this a substantial support this person gave?
No, I, I shouldn't say that. A hundred dollar donation.
How much did you raise in total?
I can tell you. Hold on.
Over $10,000? How much?
It's loading. You raised, in total, election, $14,477.
Well, there's raising, and there's how much I put in.
Okay. All right. Other, yes, please.
So, I think, did you would it fair to say that your campaign materials included your work on the Planning Commission?
Yeah.
And did you have a conversation with this attorney about your role as a planning commissioner?
Not at all. Haven't, I probably haven't talked to Frank in years. Right, Frank?
Right.
So he mailed you a check?
No, he went to voterriser.com and made a contribution.
Okay. But your, your campaign materials say that you have.
Yeah, yeah, that's right. Yeah. So, listen, I, I, I'm not, I'm not opposing it, folks.
I'm just asking.
Yeah, no, yeah, yeah, yeah.
You, you don't want to answer, I'm just asking, I'm just trying. My personal opinion is it's not a conflict of interest, and might very wildly be considered to have the appearance of such.
Only thing I go back to is that Commissioner operated up himself, it's almost asking for, just to cover all the bases. So, to be fair to, if he's almost in a way requesting it, without requesting it, just grant the request, or grant the explanation.
Yeah, I guess the other, I think, thank you for being transparent.
Yeah, yeah.
And bringing it forward. I think the other, the other issue, though, is, you know, government, right? Everyone has campaigns, and if a regular contribution, I would call, I would call this a substantial contribution, it's a, it would be a pretty typical contribution. Does that constitute a conflict so that any trustee would look at all, or any, yeah, any elected official would have to look at their contributions, and then say, okay, if, if something comes before the Board of Trustees, is this a conflict for? And I guess I would, I would consider a hundred dollar contribution in $14,000 raised, not a substantial contribution. It is a contribution, but I would, my opinion is it's a regular contribution that would be raised.
Yeah, it's not, it wasn't, I heard wrong, 800? It was 100?
100.
I'm sorry. So, I mean, the bylaws are pretty silent on this.
Actually, they're not. If, if, if a member of the public, and I did get, I did receive outreach from a member of the public.
Well, if I could finish.
Sorry.
Yeah. The bylaws are, are silent with regard to substantial campaign contributions, or not substantial campaign contributions. So, as I understand it, and I think part of our prop, it really wouldn't matter so much, but we have a shorter membership participation tonight, membership of the Planning Commission. So I think that in order to avoid any appearance of impropriety, or appearance of a conflict, we could postpone this matter to our most, well, Planning Commission meeting. Now, it is true, Section 11.1 allows a person from the public to ask us to, to, to vote on it. I, I'm gonna probably vote against it, or for it, the postponement, because we've already had it pointed out by one of our Board of Trustees, that it's a possible conflict. That's why we're dealing with it, and John's honorable way of addressing it straightforward. I just think that.
I think one issue we have is we do need to hold a public hearing, and that's.
Well, that's a, I, yeah.
But that he would, if he's going to be refused, then he cannot, he cannot participate in the public hearing.
Oh. We can't notice up another public hearing date?
We could, but there would be additional timeframe, and additional, potential additional cost to the applicant.
Well, what is the truth? Is there an additional cost to the applicant?
Well, there's an additional cost to notice.
There's additional cost to notice to township, I don't know.
Yeah.
We would absorb that, that would be a question.
Can I ask a point of information when, when Commissioner Mars done? And will, will four trustees present be sufficient to have a public hearing?
Yes, it's a quorum, basically.
And if four trustees are present, and if it, if there's action taken, either adverse, or, or in support, then, then, then it's done tonight.
Yeah, or the option, and typically, what I would do, when you're down to like four Planning Commissioners out of seven, I would give the, we don't have to take action this evening, and so that would also, I would confer with the applicant on whether they preferred us to take action with only four board members, or to, to continue.
And I won't be in the room if I'm refused.
Right.
But can you folks deliberate, and then get some sense of whether this is something you want to do or not do? I mean, do you have to table it, or postpone it in advance, or can you postpone it as it comes up, as the deliberations guide you?
It, it talks, when I read the bylaws, and you folks can correct me, it, it, the refusal is.
Well, I'll be gone, I know that.
With the public hearing. So that's why I brought it up now, as opposed to.
Yeah, I think his question was, let's say we go ahead and we do the hearing, and we're worried, and we decide at any point along there that we're just not prepared to act.
Oh, we can, can't we?
Oh, yes. We can.
So what does that mean? You might not, I mean, you don't need to, and it might not be fair.
We don't have, well, that would, because we can.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. And I'll, I'll, I'll read all them papers like everybody else.
So, other considerations?
No, I think it's, I just couldn't say, we've talked about this earlier today, and I think it's difficult, because our bylaws are silent on this, don't give us much direction, and I mean, you know, in the law, we're getting by, and judges, and campaign contribution, which are usually not, not evidence of bias, and that happens all the time with lawyers contributing to a judge campaign, so.
Yeah.
Not to get it in the jury, jury analysis, you know, we have, look at whether or not there's bias in the jury, and you know, there's a process where a judge can cure that bias. If you heard news reports of a case, and, but if you say that you can unbiasedly hear the evidence and judge the case on the facts, then the judge can cure that, any problem with any potential bias. That we, that we apply to.
Yeah. So I guess, I think that's a good suggestion, and so Commissioner Riser, based on this being a campaign contribution, do you feel like you can hear and deliberate this particular, without bias?
Deliberate this, on the, I can hear this and decide it on the merits, or lack of merits. I will say for the record, I have not talked to the attorney in years, I have not talked to him about this, I don't know who the, the petitioner is, I don't know who the potential homeowner, owners are, I've never met anybody associated with this parcel, but if, if, I also don't want to be criticized for the appearance of a conflict of interest. I know there's no conflict of interest, because I haven't talked about it, I don't have an interest in the outcome, but I'm sensitive to whether there's an appearance of a conflict of interest, and if it's this body's will, I'll, I'll, I'll abstain.
Thank you. Thoughts? Any other? Then then is there a, a motion?
A motion that we include, Commissioner Riser, in deliberations on this topic?
Is there support for that? Motion, and that would be saying that there, that you don't feel like the circumstances would be a conflict of interest. So I have to, I have to look to you two for, is there anyone to support that?
Six, ten, seven, one, zero, six.
So. I would think that that motion fails for lack of a second, but I'm not the chair.
Okay, so we'll bring another motion?
Yes, we gotta do something one way or another on it. So this Commissioner has brought up the conflict of interest, and he seems self supportive of it. I would motion to allow her to be excluded. There's more for that?
Oh, that you mean?
It recuse.
I think the word abstain.
Abstain, or?
Ah, I'm looking at it right now. It's abstain.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think that's the verb. We do the, Commissioner, Planning Commissioner Riser abstain from any participation, deliberation, consideration in the public hearing, or in, or in our substantive proceedings?
A second. All right. And then, and abstention is required if 60% of the remaining Planning Commissioners agree that the commission member may be reasonably considered to have conflict of interest, or if there is a reasonable appearance of conflict of interest.
Yes, just to clear your order, you may call the role of the same ordinance in excluding Commissioner Riser, correct?
Yeah, and the Chair has to vote last.
Oh, well, I think that'll work out. Based on how it's put out here. Okay, Gable, yes. Moore?
Yes.
And Culbertson?
There's Roth.
Oh, Roth, sorry, Roth.
No.
Okay. And Culbertson?
No.
Okay. Let's.
So, it failed. So. All right. So there will be no abstention. All right, then we'll move on with our agenda. We have, are there any communication or correspondence that anyone would like to report? I'd like to report a couple of communications and correspondence, and we'll make sure they get added to the packet with regard to the solar ordinance. We did ask Sarah Mills, who wrote some of the guidebooks for solar zoning, to review our ordinance, and also DTE has a solar group that reviewed the ordinance, and so those have been added to the packet, and then also distributed to Planning Commissioners, so we can take into account and read their comments. And then the other.
We're not gonna be dealing, we're not gonna.
We can still talk about, yeah, but they, they came in, and I, we didn't have time to put them in, let, let alone consider them, so I thought we'd get, everyone get those at the same time. Oh, Sarah Mills, and, and then, I forget the gentleman's name from DTE. And then the other one is, I had a conversation today with Laura Kendall, she called because she's interested in possibly exploring an agro- voltaic project on her property, and was interested in the solar, our, our solar ordinance, and I don't know if Laura's here this evening, but yes. And I just wanted to say that she hasn't, I thought it would be a good, because it isn't a typical, like, 48 or square rectangular parcel, it'd be a good one to try out the ordinance on, and just see what, you know, what, how the ordinance impacted that particular parcel. So I just wanted to make sure everyone knew that I had that conversation, and we can talk about it more once we get to the, the item.
You mean the new ordinance that we're considering?
Correct. Right. Because we, we wouldn't have it. Okay. Anything else? Communications wise? All right. Then, well, we have no presentation, so with that, I will open public comment, and the first, this public comment period is for folks who would like to address the Planning Commission on matters which are not on the public hearing portion of the agenda, or seek information on any other matters. Such presentations shall be limited to three minutes, except for a representative or spokesperson of a group. She'll have five minutes to address the commission. So with that, 7:21, I'll open public comment, and typically, it would be folks that are attending, and it's nice to have so many people here, in Township Hall, and then we move to folks online. So is there anyone here? And this would be anything that, it wouldn't include the public hearing, because the public comment for the public hearing will be within the public hearing, so this would be on any other items that will have, it could be on our agenda, or just general. There is another public comment period after we finish our business. Right? See, no one present? Is there anyone online? Rob?
Thank you. Rob Pattinson, your president. First of all, Commissioner Riser, thank you very, very much for the honesty, and bringing this forward. I think your sensitivity to the appearance, the key word here is the appearance of a conflict of interest was spot on. I would take it one step further, and the person who has the conflict of interest, it's up to them to recuse themselves from the discussion, and that removes responsibility from the body. I'm, I'm a little uncomfortable with the body approving or disapproving of the, whether something is a conflict of interest or not. I think it's up to the individual. I disagree with Commissioner Moore that the ordinance is silent on this. I think it's covered, completely covered, in the, the statement of there being an appearance of a conflict of interest. I think that covers whether it's substantial or, or not. But thank you, Trustee Riser.
In the bylaws?
I'm sorry, the bylaws, that's what I meant. Thank you, Trustee Riser, for that. I sincerely appreciate that kind of honesty, that's what we're looking for in our leadership, and that's very well done. And initially, my only comments tonight were going to be to congratulate Trustee Riser on his election, and Treasurer Yable on his election. Well done, both of you, and we'll see you in the, in the new year. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Anyone else?
No.
Then I'll entertain a motion to close public.
I will.
Moved by Commissioner Moore, supported by Commissioner Rothing. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Public comment is closed at 7:23. Right. With that, we have, move on to approval of the 7:22 minutes. We're lost. Out there. People have a.
I've reviewed them. I don't have anything. I would move their adoption.
Motion by Commissioner Riser, supported by Commissioner Rothing, to approve the minutes as posted. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? If the minutes are approved as posted. With that, we're moving to our public hearing for this evening, and bylaws, yeah. All right, so I'd like to open the public hearing, and we welcome the applicant to come forward, and please sign in under the, the public hearing for PRB number 24001, Fort Shee Lane, private road variance for a land split. And just as an introduction, the public hearing, we typically hear from the applicant, and then commissioners can ask questions of fact. Not any deliberation, but clarification, and we also then hear from our planning consultant, and our engineering consultant, and then open it to public comment. And just a reminder, public comment is directed to the Chair, not to any specific people within the Township Hall. And again, we try and maintain the three minute rule, so that we have an opportunity for all those who want to speak to, to speak. So with that, if the applicant, welcome, if you could introduce yourself, and.
Do I sit, stand?
You can sit, that's fine.
Thanks.
Whichever is more comfortable for you.
My name is Frank Ronert, and I am the attorney who, without thinking, well, of course I thought, but didn't consider donating to John Riser's campaign would cause this inconvenience to all of you, and to my client. I, I truly apologize. I got an email from John, and it was just, I've known John a long time, and I've always found him to be very fair, and as you saw tonight, very honest, a straight shooter. So I just hit the the button to donate online, and so I hosted myself on my own patarca. So I am the attorney for Marie Claire Anderson, also known as Maggie Anderson. She's sitting immediately to my right, in the front row. She lives, resides at 3245 Fort Shee Lane, here in Scioto Township. Ms. Anderson is the applicant for the private road variance request that is before you today. Ms. Anderson previously filed a land division application to allow a parcel division of her 10, 10 and a half acre parcel on Fort Shee Lane, and to allow a new residential construction on that new parcel. The land division request is pending the outcome for this very, variance application. Ms. Anderson agrees with the reports issued by OHM, by Carlisle Wardman, if I'm pronouncing that correctly, and by the Scioto Township Fire Department. Specifically, Ms. Anderson agrees with the analysis by Carlisle Wardman that practical difficulties and unnecessary hardships of bringing Fort Shee Lane to the Class A private road standards is not reasonable. As noted in the Carlisle Wardman report, although Fort Shee Lane was constructed long before the Township's private road standards were adopted, Fort Shee Lane appears to be in good shape. And it currently services 13 single-family homes, and according to Carlisle Wardman, the addition of one more single-family home will not jeopardize Fort Shee Lane's integrity, or cause any additional safety concerns. According to Carlisle Wardman report, the only deviation, for Fort Shee, excuse me, the only known deviation for Fort Shee Lane from the Class A requirements is the pavement width. Fort Shee Lane is 20 feet wide. Class A requires 24 feet in width. If this application for variance is approved, and the land division is accepted, and I know this is not part of your official analysis for a variance, but I want to have the members of this commission, if they haven't already, review the letters submitted by Danielle Pican, who's. if they haven't already, review the letters submitted by Danielle Pecan, who's here, Pecan, who's here tonight, and I believe she will speak. The letter that she submitted in support of Ms. Anderson's application. Danielle Pecan is the proposed purchase, proposed purchaser, under contract of what would be, hopefully, this new parcel uh, approved through the land division application. And from her letter, you'll see that there's going to be four more little kids on Fort Sheilane, if this is all approved, riding their bikes, playing games, trick-or-treating, and just having fun. I think that would be great. So, Ms. Anderson respectfully requests that you approve her application for a private road variance.
Thank you. Any questions?
I do have a question. I think you just said that the, the current road is twenty-five feet wide.
No.
And that the law only requires twenty-four feet.
No, I'm sorry, I'm bespoke.
You said twenty.
Yeah, Fort Sheilane is twenty feet wide.
The pavement is, right.
Right. And the requirements for Class A under SIO standards is twenty-four feet.
So before we speak, thirty-four.
Right.
Uh, any other questions that, that, commissioners? With that, uh, we'll move to uh, Carlisle Wardman, uh, our planner, who are creps online.
Hi, everybody.
Hello.
So, um, Frank did a great job describing um, the application. Um, you know, the only couple of things I would add is that we have, the township has allowed for um, two other variances on Fort Sheilane that I'm aware of. Um, it, like, two thousand twelve was one, and two thousand sixteen was one, for the same type of thing, allowing a land division of a parcel, um, to allow an additional lot on, um, on, on Fort Sheilane. The, the land division will meet all of the minimum lot size requirements as well. Um, I am not aware, though, how many additional properties have enough lot width and acreage to be divided. So that was a question that was posed to me earlier, how many more times may we be seeing something like this? Um, you know, without, um, I didn't have time to do the research today, I actually just got back from out of town. Um, but when I looked at this originally, I don't, I don't think that there are a lot of parcels that have the lot area and width that could um, request a land division on Fort Sheilane that remain. Um, as um, the applicant representative said, you know, the, the only condition that we know uh, Fort Sheilane does not meet is that twenty-four feet of pavement. It's my understanding that um, the fire department doesn't have any um, issue with the proposed variance, and neither does OHM, but I'll let Sally speak, speak for herself. I'm happy to answer any questions you might have on our report.
Well, I do have a question, um, this statute, I, I did go and look at the Fort She strip of the, of the road today, um, and there looked to be quite a few properties that have land around it. It's really beautiful back there, um, but I was looking at the, the ordinance today, and I'm wondering, this is very, very detailed, laid out, the requirements, um, and one of the requirements, as you mentioned in your, in your memo, is the number of houses before the road would have to be upgraded to a Class A. So what was the, the, the thinking behind uh, the drafters of this ordinance, if you recall, um, in having the single-family home requirement, number of homes?
Well, the, the number of homes, so the requirement is, that is based on the number of homes, is the width and the quality of the road construction. And so the more homes you have, the wider the road, and the more, you know, the asphalt um, construction. So, you know, this, this road already has the, the ten that they, that it would have made it a Class A road. Um, and so it already, for all intents and purposes, is considered a Class A road in the township, except that it was constructed prior to these standards, and it's four feet less in width.
So I don't understand what ten, what are you referring to, what does that mean?
In the, in the private road ordinance, there are three classes of private roads, Class A, B, and C. C is the least, um, it's a gravel road that allows for up to four homes, I believe. A Class B can also be gravel, and at a, a certain width, I think it's the same width as the Class C road, but it can't have more than six or seven homes. If you have more than nine homes, you have to build the road to the Class A standard.
Oh, so ten was referring to the number of homes?
Correct.
Okay, so I'm looking at the statute now in the various classes, and each of those classes requires sixty-five feet wide. I'm sorry, sixty-six feet wide.
Yes, and this road also has a sixty-six foot wide easement.
Oh, easement, okay, right. And so I guess I, I understand what you said, and I'm just, I'm back to my question. Why were the framers of this ordinance concerned about the number of homes and the type of road that would be there?
Mainly for emergency access, the more road, the more people you have living on a road, the more traffic, so that you want a more durable road, right, you want to make sure that it's maintained properly. And then, you know, God forbid anybody need a fireman or an ambulance to get back there, it needs to meet um, standards so that they can get back there and safely get out. Um, so that's why we have private road standards in general. These private road standards have been in place, um, uh, you know, I don't know when Fort She was built, well, nineteen seventy-three is what, you know, that was quite some time before we had our first private road ordinance here in SiO Township, so. I think the first time we had one was in the nineties.
Okay. And um, I believe you in, indicated that it was two other variances were given with regard to parcel divisions, do you remember what years those were?
Yep, I believe it was two thousand twelve and two thousand sixteen.
Two thousand twelve and two thousand sixteen, and those were after the ordinance was um,
Correct.
Um, and you don't really know how many parcels that are existing today have the ability to split land.
I, I don't tonight, I mean, I can easily look, look tomorrow and kind of give you an idea, but when I looked, um, you know, a month or so ago, when this report, you know, when this um, request came in, it didn't appear to me that there were a number of parcels that, that meet the three hundred-foot frontage and um, could be split to have two, two-point-five acre parcels. So they, you know, you're looking at a lot that has to have at least five acres and, and uh, potentially six hundred feet of frontage to be divided.
Any other uh, questions for our planner? Right, with that, I'll, uh, I believe, is it Stacy this evening with us from OHM?
It's Sally tonight, actually. Um, OHM has no comments, we have no concerns with the road widths or the proposed variance and fire. As far as I know, like Laura said, fire has no issues with it either, so, um, we are good.
Any questions of OHM? With that, um, yeah, uh, it, well, well, did, did you, uh, does the applicant have something that they wish to?
Oh, I was just, I was just going to point out that uh, SiO Township Fire Department uh, filed or submitted an email uh, dated June twenty-eighth of this year, that the fire department has no objections to this.
Yeah, yes, thank you very much. And so with that, um, I'll open our public hearing up to the, the public, and we'll start with those who are in the room. And if you would uh, come up and sign under this particular public hearing, um, introduce yourselves and um, we're open to listening to your comments.
Hi, I'm Danielle Pecan. I actually grew up on Fort Sheilane, my mom Carol is here tonight, my sister-in-law Laura, so I have a support group, and then Kathy McLogan, one of my neighbors. Um, it was a very peaceful road, and um, I actually am living in Brighton now, and I hope you guys received my letter. I did write a letter kind of explaining who I am and why I'm looking to build on Fort Sheilane. Um, this may, uh, have this year, my husband passed away um, in cancer, and I'm a new widow with four children, with our youngest being two, and my family is my support, I apologize for crying, um, and I just want to have my family to have their family nearby and the support of everybody that loves them. And when this property came available, I really couldn't believe it, and I'm just hoping that this all works out for us, that we're able to be closer to our family, um, and that my kids can grow up uh, with their loved ones around them, since their dad isn't around. I also apologize for my dress, I'm coming from work and wanted to make sure I made it here time tonight, so thank you for hearing me, and um, if anybody would like a copy of my letter, I'm happy to give it.
Thank you, and it was included in the packet, so it is available to um, any, at, anyone uh, online. So thank you, and I'm really sorry.
Thank you.
It's really difficult, I forgive. Oh, okay, alright, welcome in, anyone else?
Hello, everyone, I'm Catherine McLogan, I live on Fort Sheilane, and I wrote a letter because I wasn't sure if I was be, going to be able to get here tonight. Um, so, I wrote a letter, but I'll read it to you, because you know, uh, this may be a little bit more effective, like I can.
We got you, Lois.
Yeah, okay, um, wait just a second, here it goes. Alright. Um, for all of you, you know, Fort Sheilane is a un- unique community, most of the families have lived here uh, since nineteen seventy-five, and we purchased our home in nineteen seventy-seven, so I have known these families, the Slies, the Hollises, the Andersons, the Trisdales, the Burns, Polakys, and Gretzes for over forty-seven years. Nobody moves from Fort Sheilane, basically, what happens. The Zucks for over thirty-three years, and the Wilks, Wilkins property was purchased by their granddaughter. As you can see, we are a tight community, the Trisdales were granted a variance so that two of their children could live next door to them. I finally recommend granting the Anderson property variance to Danielle Gress, Pecan, and her four children so that they can live near their grandparents. Carol and Kevin Gretz. Um, I'm sorry, but it's a little hard to read, this small readiness of. Carol and Kevin Gretz have always been a strong support for Danielle's family, but with recent passing of her husband makes it imperative that she has the support she needs. What can be better for her children than living next to their grandparents? I can guarantee that our close community would welcome the addition of Danielle Pecan and her lovely children to our little community on Fort Sheilane. Um, so I, I really, really, really think that this is important, and like I said, our, our support, our community, we, we all support each other, and um, we, we welcome all the family of the Trisdales, they grew up on the street. So I just think it's important that we continue this tradition, so, um, and also with the fire and and uh, emergency, they'd have no trouble, my mother had a stroke, and not only do we have SiO Township, we had Dexter, and everybody came down our street, and they were all able to exit easily, so I'm sure that's not a concern.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, and I just want to remind people, sure you sign in.
Uh, yeah.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Cassie Kurawiki, I'm Realtor for Ms. Pecan. And I wanted to um, follow up on something that Ms. Moore had stated about visiting Fort Sheilane and seeing that it seemed, it appeared as though there could be multiple splits in the future, but I just wanted to say that some of that property actually, actually belongs to Shag Bark, which is a parallel private road. So I think you'll find that only one or two parcels even have enough to be split on Fort Sheilane.
By whom?
They are addressed to Shag Bark, which is a parallel.
Parallel private road.
Yeah. It may seem like there's a lot of land to be split over there, but my point is that it, the appearance of that, it, it may not actually be so because of where those properties sit, but um, I did prepare something to say. Uh, I'm a local Realtor, and I have the pleasure of representing Ms. Pecan for the purpose of purchasing four acres on uh, Fort Sheilane. My point of view, um, in considering granting the request for the private road variance might vary, so I just wanted to share that. I met Danielle by phone when she was referred to me after waiting for a non-responsive Realtor. She was distraught and needed to be heard and understood. She told me a story of loss that I hope I never have to tell for myself. I quickly took action to help Danielle fulfill her need for comfort and safety and home, which included searching for a vacant parcel near her family and her hometown. She was very determined to do what is right for her family, and a family that looks incredibly different than it did a few months ago. Danielle has four beautiful children, I met them all, they walked property with us, and they're very strong children, um, two that are toddler size. Um, as a mother, Danielle's influence is very powerful over these children. When a mother is this anxious, stressed, grieving, otherwise emotional, kids internalize that along with the trauma that they have already endured, the ongoing stress that she is under. Um, I just don't want to put that on her any longer, and it sounds to me as though the neighbors on Fort Sheilane would like to welcome her into that small, little community, and that would alleviate a lot of stress that has been put on her. And I know she's strong enough, she's a very strong woman and can adapt to a, any steep hill you put in front of her, but I'm just asking that that's not the case.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else in a, uh, present in Township Paul that would like to address the planning commission? I'd say none, is there anyone online?
No.
With that, I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing. Fine, and, okay, moved in second, uh, any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Alright, uh, public hearing is closed at seven forty-seven. And um, uh, our agenda, um, we typically go um, in, and review this under new business. Um, so we, well.
During the public hearing, we don't discuss it?
No. Yeah, that, so, you are deliberation, so, um, we do have a um, a memo from um, our planning consultant about uh, the uh, renewable energy uh, ordinance, and uh, Laura, did you, I don't, I know you were gone, and I didn't have a chance to review or even distribute other than to you the comments we received, did you want to just briefly go over um, the, the memo and?
Sure, so I think what might, might be best is, um, you know, I can go over what I changed, it's based on our last discussion, but since we did receive those comments, and neither you or I have been able to look over them, maybe it's best to postpone further conversation on this topic until our next meeting. Um, but I did, um, when you're looking through the latest draft of the renewable energy ordinance, you will see that I did um, add a little bit of language regarding native ground cover vegetation, I, I, I know there was some discussion about being more specific, but I'm, I'm leery to be too specific um, about what we want to have, um, so I'm looking for further um, clarification on that. I'm also defined and allowed dual-use facilities, what that means is it would allow for an agricultural um, dual-use with the um, solar panels, and it sounds like that's something that um, Jan's talking to Laura Hindle about. Um, and then uh, we also required a drain tile analysis to be included in um, the application as part of the review process. Um, but, no, I really think that um, with both Bob's missing and then not being able to review those additional comments, I think we're, we're a little bit behind where we should be to discuss this evening, so.
Can I um, have, yes, one question, um, in the definition section, Laura, with a number eleven, principal use solar energy system?
It's number eleven, yeah.
Um, how is that different than the, the commercial?
So commercial would be, these are, these are all commercial.
Okay.
A principal use is a commercial operation.
That's just another term for commercial.
Still another way to say it. Yeah, these terms were were taking from taken from the MSU document, the the template. And so. We were just, we're trying to be consistent throughout communities as well and the way we use our terminology so that I think everybody understands. But you know, we could also put commercial in parentheses if that's helpful.
No, I'm not. I'll remember. I just wasn't sure.
In in the in the very first sentence, under number eleven, principal use solar energy system is a commercial ground-mounted solar energy system that's in the definition. So.
And there's another part on page seven under regulation number two, schedule B. You talk about a permitted use, principal use solar energy systems on five acres of land or less. Then you talk about a conditional use, principal use solar energy systems greater than five acres. I would just recommend inserting on greater than five acres.
Okay.
And I can't find it right now, but. So this was hard reading for me.
It is.
But. There's the distinguished. Distinguishing participating property versus non-participating property. But there's the ability. To cross over in non-participating property? Or did I read that wrong?
So a participating property is part of maybe a portion of their property is part of a project, part of the commercial project. A non-participating property might be adjacent to, but their property is not part of the project. I have had certain. Solar projects where they don't have any panels on a non-participating property, but there may be an easement for electrical transmission lines to cross. Those non-participating properties, those don't, the basically, most of the time, the transmission of electricity is within an existing easement or within a right-of-way. And so you don't need permission from that non-participating property. So that would be the only way it the project would cross, I guess.
So that sort of starts to allow for like a microgrid that might provide power across property lines, which would.
Well, or even large projects. I mean, the power has to go somewhere, right? I mean, you have to transmit it from the panels to some substation or some other location. And so that happens whether it's a small project or a large project.
But if they didn't use you, from your explanation, if they didn't use utility easements, they would have to seek permission of the property, the non-participating property.
Potentially, yes.
And just my last question. You have. A subsection on page ten at the bottom, code compliance. You have that highlighted highlighted in yellow, just the.
And I didn't know.
Yeah, just couldn't get it turned off. There's no reason.
Okay.
Thank you.
Having a technical difficulty moment and I just got tired of trying.
Do you have available a version of this that shows where the changes are?
Well, I I highlighted the most recent ver- the most recent changes for you, or I I underline them, I mean. But no, I haven't kept like a running tally in red. There's been so many versions. So just the very latest items I underlined for you.
The only, the only new thing is that. On page nine, under dual use. Subsection seven. And then subsection eight underground water, same page. The last and shall contain native plant sites utilizing, that's new language. Those are only other languages that were not underlined by Laura.
Yeah, the new, then you're right, Kim. The new stuff is on page nine and ten. There is drain tile information on page ten. And then in the very beginning, on the very first page, dual use is a new definition.
And this is probably a question for Jan. Why? Why are we concerned about the underground? Habitat of the solar panels? I know you've explained this before.
You mean the drainage or what grows underneath?
What grows underneath?
I I think part of it is because of. If you don't have cover, then you you don't have the plants to help manage the stormwater. It it would just be, you know, somebody could come in and do just rocks and and send a weed barrier. So that would not be the best practice for dealing, yeah, with with water infiltration and. And also you then you can do dual use with, you know, because then you have pollinators, you have more opportunities to make it. Rather than just an energy-producing piece of property having other benefits.
Do you need a motion to postpone?
I, well, we. Discussion, so there isn't really any action. I do want to ask since if we do want to review. The the Laura Kendall's property with this to give us a visual. Because obviously there's time involved in our planner doing that and whether there's a consensus around.
Sure. Whatever you would recommend.
Oh, so sometimes when you apply an ordinance, the first time you, it it's really good to have a couple of parcels of property. To actually say, okay, this is zoned appropriately. This is what happens with these setbacks. This is what happens, you know, it's a trial. And we might also want to take like a forty-acre generic. Piece of farmland and do the same thing with it, just so that there's an actual visual application of the of the property.
I think it's a great idea. I mean, I plowed through this document, but.
Yeah, yeah, the words are really different.
There's a whole other language with solar, but. Being able to look at it. With a real project would be helpful for sure.
Okay. All right. So then, yeah, I think that would be great to do that with that because it's an odd-shaped parcel and maybe then we also take, you know, a more like. Yeah, rectangular forty-acre farmer fields kind of thing and just see what that looks like. And I'll have. You know, we can, we can work with a solar person to actually figure out the the solar size for that. And the twenty-third district can help us do that. So that would, there wouldn't be any cost to the township for that. Okay. All right. Any other comments on the renewable energy? Okay, then we'll move on to new business, possible action PRD number twenty-four zero zero one Fort Sheilane private road variance for lands. And with that, I just want to get a consensus to, we can have our discussion. Do people want to move forward with discussing it?
I do.
Yes.
Okay, great. Then we shall start.
Why don't you start? I'm gonna vote for approval of the project, but one of the concerns I've had, you know, Jan raised this before, where we step outside and create variances in different. In different. Regarding different projects for different reasons. And that's why I asked a lot of questions of what the purpose of the ordinance was and I didn't get satisfaction answered, but this is a very detailed ordinance. And we get into trouble when we make.
Exceptions.
Exceptions, yeah. And, you know, we've had people come in here and say, and they've looked it up and they see where Johnny got an exception and Jane got an exception. Like, why can't we get an exception? So I'm. Really concerned about about that and the fact that we're not following. So anyway, that's that's a major concern and that's that's the root of my questions. So I just want to put that on you.
When Laura. Mentioned that three hundred feet of frontage and at least two point five acres, what standard is as of the township standard? That's, go ahead. You can answer that, Laura.
Yeah, so this, this property is zoned agriculture and so that is the minimum lot width and lot size that we allow in the agriculture zoning district.
Yes. And and Laura, would you kind of give a little briefing on? How this variance comes before the planning commission as opposed to the zoning board of appeals?
Well, that because this is, the private road ordinance is a general law ordinance. It is not part of the zoning ordinance. And so in the general ordinance, it says that the planning commission will review the variance. And then, of course, like everything that the that this planning commission does, it then goes to the township board for final approval. So you're making a recommendation. On the private road variance to the township board. But that's the difference. It's not a, it's not a zoning ordinance. It's a general law ordinance.
Okay. And and then are there certain standards that we're supposed to review the variance under when it's a general law or general law?
They're, they're in my, they're in my report. They're the four. Items that we outlined in our memo.
You have an approximate length of roadway that Fort Sheilane is.
I. I do not know. I just know it's over a thousand feet.
Okay. Yeah, and that's where it comes into the the. The amount of funding it would take to actually bringing that up to a class A road would be enormous.
No doubt. You know, I can say this, you know, if we don't want this ordinance to read like it reads. Or we're we're having to make choices about who gets a deal and who doesn't get a deal, we should change the ordinance. Because this could potentially, not this particular, necessarily this particular project, but I think that.
Well, I think anytime you you enact a new ordinance, there are going to be existing situations that are non-compliant. And so the variance process is a way of dealing with.
I did measure it approximately thirty-two hundred feet. And Laura, I did look on, I didn't know the county launched new GIS. That was fun. It's better in some ways. It only looks like there might be five or so properties that I think just in a quick glance could meet your lot split rules. For the zoning district. I mean, five at the high end. It might be less than that.
Yeah, I thought the properties were sufficient, but I mean, I didn't get out and measure and all that.
This is very much in keeping the way out of other properties, parcels, you know.
Thank you, Turk Olbersen, for asking the question.
In keeping with what? This split would create two lots that are still bigger than other lots on here, but they're very, they're similar. It's not like you're creating an unusual lot in this neighborhood.
That would be as part of a list. I think it's great, then.
And the and the fact that there have been the two other ordinance, uh, variances.
Yes.
Therein lies the problem.
Problem.
Making my argument.
I realize that. I realize.
Now we use that, we we use that as a as a basis for doing it again.
Yeah.
And but we better not deny anybody. That's where the the trouble, I mean, somebody could get, you know.
All right. Yeah. Okay. So I I think, are there any other comments? Are folks ready? Is there a motion?
So I I have a question. I've been kind of quiet, but. Is there a sample motion? Because one of the recommendations that the health department said was limiting it to a four-bedroom residence. So is that, other than that? Condition, Laura, are there additional conditions you would recommend that that we incorporate? And I don't know, I I assume that the applicant i- i- is aware of that and Ms. Pekan is aware of that as well, the four-bedroom. Recommendation by the health department.
I have no, I have no other conditions that should be placed on on the variance request.
And I have a question for you. Are class, did you say a class A road or a class one road?
Class A.
Class A road. Are the standards for class A roads set by townships or do they adopt a monocoque? That other municipalities jurisdictions, townships adopt based on M dot or state standards?
This actually might be a better question for Sally because if you're talking about road construction, she may have a better idea. But typically, there, the ordinances that I am familiar with are all very similar for private roads.
And one of the things is that I kind of, I'm going to be supporting this because I liken it to like a pre-existing lawful non-conforming use under zoning law. Like, these people were here first, their road was here first. They have a road that's got a sixty-six-foot easement slash right-of-way that that's law, that's lawful. They have a road that was lawful at the time with respect to its paving width. And to Kim's point, we have this precedent of accommodating other residents who have requested it as well. Like, they, they came first before our township's ordinance with respect to the site and to hamstring people who want to move there. We've accommodated others and I think we'd have to have a really good reason not to accommodate this request. And given that our planning consultant recommends it, giving that OHM recommends it, giving it a support from the neighbors, that the fire department has no objections. That the Washtau County Health Department has approved the soils, subject to a four-bedroom house. I I don't know what this body or the board would rely upon in their declination of this request. And for that reason, I I'm going to be like, it looks like the majority of my colleagues, supporting, recommending this to the board as well.
Quick, just out of curiosity, Laura, what's the current rule about how many houses can be on a road or certain length of road before it has to have a class A?
Hang on, I gotta find it. Had it open and then I closed it.
Well, it's ten, right? As soon as it's ten.
I thought it was ten?
Yeah.
Yes, ten. The total of ten or more, you have to be a class A road.
And it's, there are no changes based on the length of the road, just ten houses?
Ten, well, there are other criteria to be a class A road. You can have less than ten houses, but it has a length more than a thousand feet. Measured from the roadway center line to the right-of-way. I mean, there are other, there are other criteria, but typically ten lots, a thousand feet. It's a class A road.
So I think if if someone would like to frame a motion, and we should probably definitely note the.
Four-bedroom.
The four-bedroom condition and also the.
Findings.
The findings. Yes.
I I'm often the guy that makes motions and I'm game to do it unless folks don't want me to do it, but but I'm getting looked at.
I think there's.
I would, I would make it acceptable.
Don't get paranoid now.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So. I I move that based on the. I want to say test one, but that's not the word. Based on the comments at the public hearing, based on the deliberations on this, by this body, based on the reports. Of the Washtau County Health Department, on the planning consultant, Carlisle Wardman, that based on our engineer OHM. On the planning consultant, Carlisle Wardman, that based on our engineer, OHM. And based on the, the fire department, based on resident input. And that the. Scioto Township Planning Commission recommends that the Board of Trustees. Approve the requested variance as it meets the required standards as set forth in the Scioto Township. Section twenty-four dash eleven and subject to the following conditions. And that one, the. I want to say the applicant or the, the homeowner, not. That the, the.
The register.
Limited to a four-bedroom home. To construct a four-bedroom home. No more than four bedrooms. Own the, allowed on that parcel, on the parcel after it's split. That would be my motion, subject to any friendly amendments that any of you may have.
Yeah, I think we just need to name the private road variance number twenty-four as number one.
Just going to say that regarding property ID H dash O eight dash O eight dash four hundred dash O one one. At thirty-two forty-five Fort Sheilane, Scioto Township.
Thank you. And there was support from Commissioner Moore. Further discussion? We'll call for a roll call vote.
People, yes, Rafi.
Yes.
Rizer.
Yes.
Olberst.
Yes.
Uh, Moore.
Yes.
Motion passes five zero.
So this is a recommendation to the township board and. Laura, again, that will be, we have to approve our minutes and then typically it goes to the, the board. After we approve our minutes, which will be at our next meeting, two weeks. All right, thank you very much. All right, moving on to reports. Thank you very much. OHM, anything?
No report.
No report. Okay, Laura, what's coming up?
Um, no new projects that I'm aware of. So we'll talk about renewable energy in our next meeting.
So, no, no, have there been any other submissions?
No, no new submissions.
Okay. All right, then I just want to remind folks that next Monday from four thirty to six. The J-RAG is holding a meeting. We haven't. I don't know if the invitations went out yet or not. We invite.
I emailed everyone that was elected.
Okay.
Or trustees.
Yeah, next Monday. Four thirty. It's gonna be four thirty to six, yes. Okay, and ESTF has, has not met. I, I believe on the trustee agenda will be the. Acceptance of, we had a kickoff meeting for the Jackson, the Semco grant, which is the track. Yep, and we're, we should have a. The HVAC, the HVAC study should be completed by the end of the month. And let's see, and then the other thing is the approval of the. Agreement with Meyer, the licensing agreement with Meyer for the sustainability. Yeah, yeah. I think that, that came from the, obviously the Meyer attorneys.
Yeah, they're in, in our, yeah, October fifth.
Six.
Six.
Well, except it's the fifth because they have to put up the tent the fifth and it goes to the seventh. Because they have to take down the tent on the seventh. So that's the reason for the.
That meeting on Monday is going to be on Zoom. Is there a thing I need to do to come over and make sure that I?
There, if, when they post the agenda in the online, there'll be the.
Sauetownship.org under the meetings section.
Under democracy and then look up the. Entity of the meeting.
It'll probably be posted. Jackson Road Advisory, yeah. It'll probably be posted when stays, my guess.
Okay, thank you.
It's usually about three or four days ahead of time.
Okay, BOT and.
I have a written report that has the, the date wrong. I said October fifth. Take that five and make it into a six and then it'll be accurate for the sustainability fair. So it's the Sunday date, not the Saturday date. So, other than that. I have written copies if you need it. And then LPC, we wanted to, so that's my BOT report.
Okay.
See the written report. Call me if you have any questions. Email me. Number two. LPC, we've run the closed session recently regarding making recommendations for. Recommending to the board to acquire conservation easements. So stay tuned on that. Hopefully there'll be more on that publicly. In the month to follow PPP. We haven't met since we last met and we'll be. On the. Next, two days rather. And I'll, I'll report out at our next meeting.
That typo we gave you, so man.
All that matters.
Third line from bottom page two, right here.
It does say fire, but it's just spelled wrong. Yes, fire melon, yes, it does. Yes, thank you.
Uh, DDA.
Uh, we haven't met, but I did email with the road commission folks. Because I noticed that Betty and Dino Drive weren't on their project site for the summer. I got a response back that they added them to the project site. They're hoping they'll have them done by the end of the year. They don't know when they're going to work on those yet. And they are starting to work on Jackson Road. They've been working about a week over by. I have to redo the turnarounds for overview.
They've started that part.
But we meet next month.
Okay. The watershed comes on. Um, wisher more, Western Washtenaw.
We have not met. Since we last reported, but we. We are leaving. Wednesday. And that, our topic of conversation would be housing. Yeah, I did want to, I sent an email out to. Some of the board of trustees, I think it was Will and Jessica. And try to get the word out. On Tuesday, Debbie Dingle will be at the. It's called a Western Washtenaw County Town Hall, the Chelsea District Library. So. One of the good things, she's been around lately. I ran into her at the Roadhouse the other day.
Oh, boy.
Yeah, but a good thing happened that she was, she called and asked for a tour. A ride tour. And Marie. Gress, who's our executive director. Did that, kind of like that, gladly and kind of explained some of the problems with our funding. So one of the things that's happening is is the shuttle of funding is, they cap. How much, a percentage, how much they're gonna reimburse us for, for eligible operating costs. They, and then they cap the amount. So we've gone, we were at a thirty-six percent. And then it capped at three hundred fifty-five thousand. So year twelve, three hundred forty-five thousand, even though they're eligible expenses, they're not paying. But the new twenty-twenty-four, twenty-twenty-five number is going down to eighteen percent. With a lower cap, but hell, eighteen percent. So she had the opportunity to explain that to. And she seemed very interested in knowing about that and following up on it. So that's, that's a big cut for us. Yeah, so anyway, that's happening on Tuesday at six o'clock. Chelsea is library. Or it's coming tomorrow. Our, tomorrow, tomorrow. And then our. W two rag meeting is, is Wednesday. Those are not on Zoom. We've been meeting at the Chelsea Council Room. We used to meet at Wave offices, but. There was some problems with that. But anyways, now we'll be there. So. Some wild things come out of those meetings, though. One of the, so one of the good things is that we're trying to reschedule our meetings. I think this is, we've gone for third meeting this week because we want to invite all the other townships that have heretofore been participating with this group. Manchester, Bridgeport, Freedom. And it looks like this group is turning into more, not only do we share information about transportation and housing. But. You know, how do we effectively, as a group, lobby our interests to the Washtenaw County Commission? As well as the legislature to, because. You know, I think there's a feeling among us who have participated in these meetings that Western Washtenaw County, it's like a stepchild. And in our, it's, you know, it's interesting. So it's been, I know there's been a lot of conversation about that. But anyway, we're trying to bring these other folks in. And then I would say that I was a little bit shocked at our last meeting. One of the members brought up the idea. But then, so everybody knows that all the townships, all the cities are having problems with affordable housing. Or housing, attainable housing. So everybody's struggling with that. And but one idea that was floated, I told Jan about this, was that. All these homes that have seniors in them, they're empty nesters living in four or five-bedroom homes by themselves. And so the idea was they need to get out of these homes to make homes for younger people to buy. And I was so shocked at the idea of it. I couldn't even respond. I made me come as a surprise to you guys. Because usually I can respond, but I was just floored that a person would think about throwing an old lady out of her home. So they could get a young person in there and raise, of course, that raises headly and all that. The taxes are, are more. But that's how desperate, I guess, people, townships and cities are about the housing problem. So.
And, and I think, you know, I was thinking when we were talking about the, you know, land split and wanting to live close to your support. And, and sometimes it's the younger folks and sometimes it's the older. And we might want to give some consideration in the discussion of ADUs. And whether or not that's something that CIO would want to. So it would be, and obviously there are septic, you know, the septic issues and so forth and REUs with. With. Our sewer system, but that is a way to support. Except for families.
And that's come up, the Sylvan Township representative, he's brought that up many, many times when we talk about this, this problem everybody's facing. That doesn't seem to be carrying the day with people. They seem to want these large, I mean, that's not like a large complex, I guess. But it, it seems that nobody's interested in that because I noticed that I'm still getting to know all the folks.
What do some of the people, you know, for the rest of us, think about the tiny homes? I know Northfield Township had their disagreements over whether they wanted tiny homes or not.
Well, tiny homes came up in the, in the, in the sense that Webster.
I think it was Webster or Northfield.
Webster Township had a problem and took, there was an owner of property, maybe forty acres. And he was building tiny homes on them. They, they took them to court to stop it because. It didn't have sanitation, these tiny homes, and it didn't have water. Or the water they had was, was dark water. What's it called? Not dark, gray water. And it was going on adjacent properties and some of the neighbors were complaining.
Yeah.
And so I remember the mayor of Chelsea, she was like, well, what's the objection to tiny homes? And nobody, I don't think anybody's objectionable to tiny homes. But it came up in this context. Because, you know, their concerns about regulating it and being.
You, you need to have the, the infrastructure to support them.
Yeah, we have to have infrastructure. We don't have any zone for it if somebody wanted to do it.
No, in fact, we have a, a pretty, there's a minimum standard for square footage that we might want to look at too.
But I would say this to, you know, I mean, in working with Representative Driscoll, Chelsea got a half a million dollar grant.
What was it? Dingle or Driscoll?
I did, what did I say? They got, they, and by that, I mean, they knew, they learned from her what monies would come in hand for, what are the possibilities? And so they got half a million dollars for their fire department. They use how they want. So I've been, you know, and then I think the last thing is, is that this guy that came, I mentioned this guy. Before, he talked about some of the stuff that they've done in Adrian, down in Lenawee County. And he had a whole lot of ideas about, I have to look at my notes, different kinds of housing that's very cheap to build. And I can't think of some of them. Prefab stuff. And some of those things. I think that there's nothing wrong with, now, you know, when you think of prefab, you think of cheapness. But no, I don't think that, that all of it is cheaply made. But it's cheaper to, to produce, to build. And so we might think of that, might want to think about that kind of stuff. In. In some of our discussions about housing.
I think the other thing too, for, this is more of an announcement, is to follow the comprehensive plan review that Ann Armour's doing. They have a bunch of stuff online now. And they're going through a process of actually simplifying zoning. So there are just some, I don't know how many of, five different types of, of zoning. And as opposed to the multiple industrial, you know, different densities and so forth. But my thought was, you know, as we look at Jackson Road and all of the, you know. The myriad of uses that we have and, you know, is, is there something, you know, from that that we could take to help? You know, maintain the mix of things that we want on Jackson Road, but not have all these. You know, different piecemeal zonings. So people have to come in and ask for conditional use for ten percent of. Floor space for retail.
Yeah, and who was it you said would be discussing housing?
This gentleman came one day to our.
Oh, you mean they caught, you mean tomorrow?
Is that tomorrow?
The coffee thing or?
No, no, she's asking about the gentleman that talked about.
Oh, the tiny homes.
Prefabricated homes.
But you said, right, when you first started talking, that you were going to be meeting, you were going to be talking about some things, including housing.
Oh, that is Wednesday.
It's Wednesday?
And, and that's the Washtenaw County, Washtenaw area. Regional Advisory Group. W two rags.
And you can, and, and Kim is our, our representative.
And that is Wednesday at. Seven o'clock at the Chelsea Council Room on Main Street.
And then just a reminder, pre-app, applicant, rotation. Kim, you're up for September.
September works. October. I got a little big giveaway.
You're not up. Okay, then, any other activity reports? Then we'll move on to public comments. Anyone here? Anyone online? Right, then no. Okay, okay, great. Rob.
Very slow on the button. I'd just like to say that. John, your Board of Trustees' report to the Planning Commission is not in the package. And thank you to Carlisle Wardman and to OHM for their. And thank you to Carlisle Wardman and to OHM for their, um, their progress reports, uh, they are in tomorrow's Board of Trustees' package, and that goes a long way towards helping us understand what's coming down the pike. And just to remind the Planning Commission that, um, the, uh, the, the one on Dexter Miller, the forty-seven units on ten acres, um, can't remember the name of it, and Aubrey's Grove are still percolating away.
I think the, the Knights of Columbus.
Aubrey's Grove.
Thank you. I wanted to say Kentucky Fried Chicken. I knew that was wrong.
Different KFC.
Yeah, the one that reminds you of the chicken, yes.
So.
Okay.
But those two are still percolating along, and just a heads up to the Planning Commission that that's still going on.
Okay, um, and, uh, if we could a- ask, um, the, if the OHM reports and the CWA reports could also come to the Planning Commission, just copy us. That would be great. Yeah, and, uh, yes.
Rob, in response, um, I sent it to Christie and Francis, and they'll add it to the packet if you want. If you, if you don't, we'll wait until they edit, um, I can email you a copy, sir, if you want.
No worries. I will wait for the packet. Just wanted to give you a heads up.
No, I, I'm, thank you.
Okay, great.
Thanks.
All right, um.
No.
Right, excellent, and, um.
Move to adjourn second.
And by consensus, we're closing public comment at eight-thirty was.
Move to close public comment.
That's fine. All right, and we have a, a motion for adjournment. Uh, in a second. Commissioner Apple, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Bye.
Say aye, bye?
Bye.
All right, we are adjourned at eight-thirty was.